This Tuesday, January 9th, 2018. If you could please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is public participation. Since there is no public here, it is just us at the table, we will close public participation. And we will go on to item number four, which is budget discussion. And as promised, we have some data to kind of go over. So at your place settings, you'll see discretionary versus non-discretionary expenditures. And it breaks down the percentage of the total with the expenditures that went into our budget. And Matt, would you want to give a quick overview of all that went into your preparation?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
The number that you see on the total is just the general fund operating budget that we're being proposed to you for 2018, 2019. In response to a query by Board Member Thompson, he asked for contracted contractual obligations versus non-contractual obligations. When looking at the budget, I kind of had a hard time of separating what is and what isn't. You can look at like transportation contracts as being contractual, but we also have Department of Ed rules and regulations of what we are to provide to be an approved public school system. So all the teachers that we have that keep our class sizes within specifications, we kind of need them. You need to have a principal at your school. You need to have a school nurse. You really need to have all these people in place, so I couldn't separate some staff, you know, from others. So I figured I'd just throw it into perspective for you as far as where you're spending your money. You see the salaries and benefits, that's over 70% of your budget right now. Special education is around 10%. And the other items like debt service, which is 2%, vocational ed tuition, which is a smidge. You know, the technology, we spent less than a half a percent on there. Textbooks is like 0.61%. Everything really kind of goes towards, you know, the facilities operation, the salaries of those that we need here to be a functioning, approved school district, and the benefits and everything like that associated with them. So I just kind of put this together, not to give you the contractual obligations, but to give you our obligations that we need and have to abide by in order to put forward a school system. So you can see, there's not a whole lot here that you could call discretionary or nice-to-have or we would like to have type expenditures. But I just kind of give that for your information, so you can take a look at or ask me any questions or later on, send me an email if you'd like, it's fine.
Okay, so to that end, is this going to be available on our website, so we can supplement that?
If you would like it to.
I think that'd be great. Because we went over kind of high level, but we didn't go over granularly where every category falls. It's definitely something we want to make available for the public's consumption. Cindy and Michael.
When you put this on the website, would it be possible to do like a circle graph, that, a pie graph, that shows, that I think that really creates a solid...
A visual, absolutely.
A visual. Because really what, just a couple of observations, aside from salaries, benefits, special education, and then facilities operation and transportation, every other subsection is less than 1% of the budget. So I think that that's really interesting, other than those, what, five items?
We'll see some slices of pie that... I usually like to take and then some little slivers there, too, so...
Well, in the pie graph, you could do "other" and then just list out...
Yeah, what they are.
Because, I mean, to do 1% doesn't make sense.
You're right. That's a good, thank you.
School board. Okay. So, Michael?
Thank you very much for this. I know that we've had discussions in the past. I guess I wasn't fully clear with what I was looking for, and I, we might be able to just guesstimate at this point. What I was really looking for is what the contractual increases were that were actually from the prior year. So salaries were, let's just say it's 3%. I know that that's, so it's 3% higher than last year because of the contractual, contracts with the teachers' union and everything like that. So what I was trying to kind of point out is that there's almost, just in salaries and healthcare alone, there's probably about $1.5 million over last year's pay because of, you know, contractual increases because of how healthcare increased. And what I was trying to point out is that, you know, you came to us with a 0.78%, I believe, increase, even basically absorbing almost 2-plus percent increases from contractual obligations. That's kind of what I wanted to point out to the public, is that, you know, you actually really are cutting the budget instead of actually growing it in taking care of what was contractual obligations. So I just wanted to kind of point that out, that 0.78% increase is actually really about 2.5% or 2.25% less than what it would have been if, with the contracts going forward, so...
Okay. If I could step up to the plate again and swing it on another pitch, I'd be glad to put that together now that I more fully understand what you're asking for. That's easy enough for me to do. Essentially, what you're talking about is looking at the default budget that we have versus what this is. And the default is $300,000 less than what we're asking for as far as for 2018, 2019, for the general fund.
More.
More, yes.
Sorry.
I always do that backwards, I'm sorry. This is one of my, one of my little, you know...
Yeah, what I was kind of saying is that, you know, you take all the teachers' salaries that we had last year at whatever contractual obligations, that's the difference there, that obviously should have been an increase in the budget. Then you have the healthcare, which came in at 3.5%, so it's 3.5% more than what it would have been. So it's, people have to understand that a 0.78% increase is really not an increase, it's really, it's almost like taking away from what was actually contractually obligated. So that's kind of what I was trying to point out.
Okay. Andy?
Yeah, and just to reinforce Matt's point, that's, that's what we always use, sort of the default budget as the state, because it's really, if you had to continue with the increases and all the obligations, it's that amount. So I think there's only been one year in the last seven that I can remember where the default is lower than the proposed operating budget. I think it was only one time. So this is one of our typical ones. And people all the time say we're growing it all the time, but you're right, the default budget is the real gauge of what the continuation of increases would be based on the contractual obligations and healthcare and retirement and all that kind of stuff that bubbles. So our goal is always to get it below default as much as we can. If you do level fund it great from the previous year, but in general, the default budget is really the trajectory that you try to back up from, so...
Okay. And I think, Marge, you had talked about what tiered cutting would look like, and if you wanted to go over that tonight?
Exactly. So I think all of you responded that you felt the budget definitely was prudent, that was given to you. However, there are lots of decisions you have to make about upcoming warrants and so on. So it probably is wise for us who put the budget together, and when I say that, the entire administrative team, to give you tiered cuts in case you feel the need to go further. So I'm going to have Matt do some highlighting, but what I want you to see is, in the first tier, you will see that we took the budget, that is currently at 0.78%, down to 0.5%, a half a percent. It showed you what that would look like. And then you see the second is 2.4%. And then lastly, if we leveled the budget. And we will go through, we'll go back and forth if we need to and play off each other and tell you why we made the choices we made. The most important thing for you to know is that the administrative team came together to review this. So all administrators that put the budget together had voice in how we would undo it. So Matt, do you want to start by defining tier one?
Yeah, I'll just go through tier one.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, as we stated, the current amount that we are over from last year is $579,000. The first three items, one was offered up to us and one was a suggestion based upon one of the meetings we had that we took another look at. So item number one, there was a calculation error made in calculating the reading text at Thornton's Ferry School that was known after the budget went to print, and Bridget Belmer, the principal there, let us know about it. So that's something that, a $2,440 reduction that we can take right off the top, because that was just straight math. The next two have to deal with special ed tutoring services. I talked with John Fabrizio, the Director of Student Services, and we did a six-year run in history of that, these accounts, the six or eight accounts. And we found out that historically, these two counts, regular for salary for high school and then the special ed tutoring for high school have been historically lower. So we were comfortable in putting those down, $10,000 each, so we reduced those accounts. The other accounts we have are in the area of maintenance, the art room cabinets at the upper elementary school, $46,000, put that off for year, for a year. The calf tables at Master Cola Elementary School, we've had those up before you for a few years now. We think we can get another year out of the cafeteria tables at Master Cola Elementary School, so we chose to defer that. Then we went through and looking in our maintenance accounts, where we took $5,000 from painting. We went through the furniture replacement accounts for each of the schools and basically zeroed them out, as we have done in the past, when we've had to make some cuts to get to a certain price point as far as the budget goes. The additional equipment, you see for $15,000, that's a split air conditioning system that we removed from the budget, leaving one there. We also took away some maintenance items, floor tiles, leaving $3,000 in the account. Replacement of drapes and shades, $1750, leaving $1,200 in the count. Striping of parking lots, the only thing, you know, if we pave the, if we have a warrant article, if we get to that point where we have paving of Thornton's Ferry, you know, that striping will be included in the cost of the pavement in the warrant article if we do that. So we figured we'd just take that out and then we reduce the whiteboards by $7,000, leaving $8,000 in the account. So those are the reductions that we thought in tier one that were appropriate to put before you this evening and for your consideration.
So far, Andy has a question?
So first of all, thanks to administration for doing this. It's, I know it's always hard, but we always like to look to see what we're required to get to certain levels. One of the things, the question that I have is, is you described that all the furniture items in all the schools, you just zeroed out and didn't do any upgrade. My question is, there was not a lot of granularity in those things saying, were there things that had to be replaced, you know, like completely unreparable that it was going to cover versus just part of the normal upgrade? So I guess the question is, by zeroing all these out and delaying it for a year, are there things that were going to be caught in a bad place because they're not repairable to get through the following year?
Marge?
Well, for one thing, I would say our maintenance department is just superb when it comes to doing welding or whatever, so that's why we've been able to maintain some of the furniture that we've had for as long as we've had it. The bottom line for us was, if we were going to go here, we did not want to get into hurting a program per se, meaning taking away anything that would jeopardize the program, nor did we want to get into personnel. So it just doesn't leave you a lot of option. And so for furniture, it's basically fulfillment of a plan. The board has gotten into very much long-term planning. And so when you're trying to go through and replenish your entire school, let's say, of chairs and desks, it can take, you know, five to eight years. And when you do a deferment, it just pushes it off, as you know. So basically, people realize that up against programmer personnel, they will give you furniture any day. And so it would be calling upon maintenance and/or, we've also been fortunate, we don't highlight it a lot, but sometimes to replenish, let's say, chairs in a faculty room or in an office or whatever, we get notices from the judicial branch of New Hampshire, and they will offer up furniture. And if we get our bid in first, we go and retrieve furniture. So it doesn't speak to the students, but it does speak to the other kinds of things. So I would just say, again, these are hard choices, but in our talking, we felt this was a better proposition than programmatic elements.
Michael? And then Cindy.
I have a question. I might be recalling incorrectly, maybe it was something else, but when the furniture was deferred the last time and it came back, wasn't it more expensive in the budget the time after it was deferred?
In most cases.
Yes. So for me, it's, you know, you can kick the can further down the line and it keeps on getting expensive. You look at the field out in the high school now, and I saw it on the CIP, and I think it's about an 80% increase over when it was first discussed of actually going live. So for me, it's a program that you've put in place, you know, you have a plan, it's going to cost us just as much, if not more, if we keep on just deferring it out. So I appreciate that you've gone through all this, but for me, it's, to me, I try to look long-term on budget versus just this year, so...
Cindy?
I agree with Mike. I think we put these plans in place to be able to look at the replacements prudently and over a period of time, so there's not one big hit. I think in the, in the years that I've been involved on the Budget Committee, and then now, three years there, four years on the school board, I've seen a couple of situations where that can has been kicked. Ad nauseam, we've heard that word, kick the can. So I always get a little nervous about that. And the other thing is, I know that a lot of this furniture that's being replaced, it's probably 30 years old or more, in some cases, would be my guess. Certainly, it's my recollection in past furniture replacements where I've gone in my Budget Committee responsibilities to the school, seen the chairs or furniture that's being replaced. And in particular, you know, one thing that came to mind was the Merrimack Middle School. One of the things on here, the 70 lab stools, the six bookcases, the table. The lab stools, I don't know if these are the ones, but I remember in taking the tour, you know, we fixed them and we will, our maintenance department will weld them and do whatever they can, but often when they go to replace them, it's because they just can't do it anymore. So it kind of, having seen those lab stools, makes me wonder if there's a safety issue with this particular item. And probably not if they've offered it up, there must be, maybe it's, maybe they can do it one more time or one more fix or something like that. But it does make me concerned that there could be a safety issue with them. And I'm not inclined, I think we did have, probably, this was probably one of the most prudent budgets as far as the operating budget that I've seen in a while. And maybe there's a couple of things that, that we can defer or that we can cut, but I'm not inclined to, this year, change those furniture replacement plans.
Are there any other questions? Because I have a couple. You have a couple more? Okay. Mine was, start with item number 16, which is striping parking lots district-wide. And that's, that was inclusive or all of the Thornton's Ferry projects? So I guess the question is, were there other striping projects district-wide?
Yeah, this is in addition to the Thornton's Ferry.
Okay, so Thornton's was inclusive and this is the other, these are the other facilities?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure, basically...
...a conversation with Tom, so we didn't...
Yep, understood. I just want to make sure I understood how, what we would be addressing, it really is every building but Thornton's, because they would have it with their paving project. And then the one thing, and I think it comes up in our CIP every year, and it's windows. So when I look at drapes and shades, I know it's not a lot, it's $1,750. But, you know, when we look at windows that we're going to replace, I would defer for those, more than I would defer for those that aren't being replaced, because obviously those are the ones that are going to need maintenance and they're going to be, continue to be used. Where some drapes and shades may not work with the new window structure, maybe. And there may be different types of glass that we would invest in with new windows that might affect how sun comes in, those kind of things, so... But that's, it's, again, not a lot of money. I know cafe tables is another thing that came up, which is item number five. And, I mean, the average age, I remember, because we have been doing cafe tables probably for the last five years, and they were, you're right, about 30 years old. And, you know, you would have them welded and when you couldn't weld them anymore, you had basically a spike where the seat used to be, and you don't have a usable seat, but you would even still use those tables for the seats that they could offer. So it really is, you know, not a lot to choose from. And, you know, I did look ahead a little bit on two and three as well. There's, when we're giving it up, we, I worry about what we're doing with our responsibilities as a board if we, if we take some of these cuts. The only ones that are obvious to me are where the texts were, a calculation error. And if tutoring, if you feel that that's sustainable, then that's fine, but if you are seeing on the horizon where more medically sensitive students are going to need this kind of tutoring to keep up with the rigor of our curriculum, then we have to make sure we're looking at using those appropriately. And I know that you are, I'm sure, doing that every day. When you look at painting, district-wide, that leaves $10,000 in the account, but it's $5,000 not getting done. We have a lot of, a lot of walls to cover and, you know, a lot of wear and tear on the buildings. I think we, as a district, don't have new facilities, is a general practice, other than the middle school, which at 17 years is our newest building. But we pride ourselves in maintaining our buildings to the state where they are, not just presentable, but they are, they are welcoming. So I think that's, you know, welcoming for students, welcoming for the community. So that's where I look at these things, I'm just not sure where, we're not taking away our responsibilities and putting it on you to take some of these cuts. So I do, I do take pause with what you're, we are offering, but I really see that that's all you could really offer as well. Naomi, did you, and then I'll take, I'll go back to Andy. First before seconds, that's the way we work at the dinner table.
It just occurred to me while I was listening and thinking about this, item number 13, is it 13, the split air, split air conditioning system? I wonder if for those who haven't tracked it or don't recall at home, you could give a quick summary of what that is and where it is and that type of a thing?
Yeah, sure. A split air conditioning is, it's a unit that sits high up on the wall, there's a condenser outside, usually on the roof, and it usually covers around two rooms. It's for some of the kids with breathing difficulties. If we don't have that, what we do is we get those portable rolling units that you see at Home Depot or Lowe's that you can, well, that's exactly where we get them, that you can put in a window or something like that. Those are not really meant to cover an 800-square-foot classroom with kids in them, but they do, do help. It's not an ideal situation. But for those areas that we, we need it, this is something that special ed and the kids in those rooms do kind of require, makes their existence a little more tolerable. But if we don't have those, we put in a couple of the portable units, which we have an inventory of, yeah.
Okay, Andy and Cindy?
So, you know, obviously the things that you put into this cut list, aside from some of the things like being able to maybe trim some of the tutoring budgets in the area that we found, all the rest of these do hit at sort of planning and method, using methodology, kind of cave-in talk, in terms of what we need to do to the district to keep it going. And if you look at the other cuts below it, they all sort of fit into the same realm. And, you know, get to the point where we can't defer the bleachers, because we know that they're, they're an issue, right? I believe that they are.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go over tier two and three, just so the people at home know what we're talking about. But when we got down to try and level this budget, I mean, if you wanted to literally be at zero, then we had to get into big ticket. And now we come down to literally, looking, do you take out a roof? Do you take out bleachers? And quite frankly, it came down to a roof protects all of your assets? And, I mean, it's like splitting a baby into, I mean, it's just...
Right.
And the bleachers, I mean, we literally talked among ourselves and said, so there's a bit of a list, but we thought we maybe could forego it. I mean, it was, we wanted to show you, if you want zero, you know, I'm not saying it's the best thought...
Right.
And you can override anything, but it was, I wanted you to realize that we took the two biggest items that we had, we weren't going to touch water filtration, and it was like, all right. And that's how we got there.
Right. So just to finish my thought, so my, my reason to go through this exercise was to prepare us for the next part of our discussion tonight, which is around the warrant articles, because there's some very targeted and specific things we're going to talk to. For me personally, I would not want to entertain any discussion on these cuts until we go through and talk about the warrant articles, so we know what we, as a board, want to put in front of us, and then decide as a board whether we want to go back and look at some of these cuts. That's me personally, because for me, my purpose was, I believe that the budget that you presented, the proposed budget, was extremely efficient, extremely tight. What can, what concerned me was some of the warrant articles that we were going to be talking about. So for me, it's good to see this, but I'd like us to go through the warrant articles and then decide as a board if we wanted to revisit this. That's just my position on this.
Okay, well, Andy, I think what we wanted to do, for the sake of transparency and opportunity for the community to, you know, they've had a couple of months with our budget, but they haven't had time to consider what we're asking of our district to reduce that budget. So we wouldn't even touch this until, at a minimum, Tuesday, having these proposed cuts up.
No, no, I understand, but I'm saying that if we, if anybody at the table was prepared to do anything, I suggest that we go through the warrants before we even consider this. And if that's Tuesday, that's Tuesday.
I think at a minimum, that's the only, the responsible thing would be to discuss it on Tuesday as far as action items, if we choose to have them. Cindy?
I also, it's my recollection, maybe I'm incorrect, that we might have, last year, moved one of those air conditioners or the air conditioning from the budget last...
We had, there were, I think, two proposed last year that we did one, I think, or something. So we've, we've never, recently, we haven't not done any, but we just brought the number down. So we've always done one for like the last two or three years, I believe, so...
So that made me wonder if there was anything on this list that we already deferred from last year?
Extra can kicking?
Yeah, like is it, is it a two-year can kick?
We were, I believe, very good, because everything in the budget was asterisk, so we wouldn't forget it and all the deferments came forward. So I believe we took care of all deferments. In fact, that was our guide. Had we not had that, that could have been rather difficult. So may we go through tier two and three, just...
Oh, absolutely.
I just want to point out before Matt goes into tier two, because this is really important to point out, notice sink bases, of the sink bases at MES are in tier two. And if you look up above, as Matt pointed out, there were three or four things, especially around what I call projects, maintenance projects. When Tom was asked in looking at four things, like the art room cabinets, the cafeteria tables, and the art room, whoops, art room cabinets, cafeteria tables, trying to see what the other one was, there were three. He, sink bases, he definitely wanted to be in tier two, because that is something that just needs to be done, because of the water and, you know, after a while, you get rot and that kind of thing. So we just need to be about doing it. That has been put off a few times, and so I just need to point out that is a major commitment.
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah, the tier two cuts brings us another $50,000, so your percentage increase goes from half a percent to 0.4 of a percent. And the first item is the sink bases, and as the superintendent mentioned, that Tom is really concerned about them, because I believe they are particle board, they have swollen up a little bit, and it needs, they do need to be replaced sooner than later. For all intents and purposes, you know, this maybe should have been a tier three, but you've got to make decisions, so the decision was made to leave it in tier two. The other items are equipment items, additional equipment for art at the high school, large format color printer for $2,800, euphonium at the upper elementary school for $1,500, a, two table tennis tables for $800 at the upper elementary school. We had an electronic keyboard for Reed's Ferry Elementary School. We had an electronic keyboard for Reed's Ferry Elementary School. Some tone chimes at Master Cola Elementary School for seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And then we took down, because of looking at past history and the utilization level of the co-curricular transportation, we thought we could still provide the level of service that's needed with a cut of forty-six hundred dollars in that line. And in talk, talking with our technology director, Nancy Rose, there was around maybe fourteen thousand dollars that she could reshuffle the deck and reprioritize some of the items that she had in her technology, technology infrastructure account to allow us to offer up a cut of fourteen thousand dollars, so that all adds up to your tier two fifty thousand dollar cut.
Are there any questions on tier two? Let's go to tier three.
Tier three? And we go to tier three. That is to get us to, to zero, or just a tad bit below zero. So the first thing we did is take the bleachers that we had talked about, that was in the capital improvement plan at the high school. These are the outside bleachers next to the, uh, the newer bleachers where the track is behind, behind the high school. We've gone before, you know, the board, the planning and building committee, and the planning board. They are listing a little bit, they're not ADA compliant, but it's something that if we've, uh, you know, kind of gone through with it for these years, one more year, really, really wouldn't hurt. They're not a, in danger of collapsing or anything like that. We would never do anything like that that was in that kind of peril, but we took that out. We took out light boards district-wide, and we lowered in the central office budget, our equipment repair account by eight hundred dollars just to get to a level funded budget. So we're a hundred and thirty-six dollars less than last year when you add up tier one, tier two, and tier three.
Are there any questions on tiers two and three? That's so far Andy.
So I want to poke at the bleachers, because what you just said is a little different than what I remember when Tom, when it was presented at the CIP. We talked in past years about how they might have been listing a little bit, they weren't ADA compliant, but we could have gotten by with them. If I remember the discussion we had this year, it was worse than before, and that there was other issues that made Tom really want to bring these more up to the forefront of having us address, to the point where we decided, or we ta, talked about making sure it was in the operating budget versus a warrant article. Because I know we'll be talking about the, we've talked about the, the bleachers in the Smith Gym as being something that we would likely defer or put in a warrant, whatever we decide. But we were to the point where the bleachers at the high school outside, we want to put in the operating budget because they're an issue. Now, what you just described it, you were a little wishy on it, so I, I guess I need to know as a board member, do we really need, are we really at the point where we should be replacing these?
I think you should be replacing them, and we put them in tier three because we don't want you to go that far, basically. But that, that was, you know, in order to grab three hundred thousand dollars to get you to the, the bottom line, that was an item. And then, of course, we'd have to pay additional attention to them during the year to make sure that they were.
They're not sinking, they're not falling apart.
Absolutely, yeah.
Right, and again, to get to the superintendent's points, this is in deference to removing programs or removing positions and things like that, okay?
Are there any other questions on tiers two and three? Seeing none, I assume this will also go on the website tomorrow for consideration in the budget section of our website. If there's any questions that come up between now and Tuesday that you feel, if you could send to me and Marge, so that way they have time to prepare any, for the research that you may request, and that way we can properly have a vetted conversation on Tuesday. Michael?
Sorry, I just thought of a question, and you might have say, said this earlier. What's our current student-to-teacher ratio?
It really depends on what grade you're talking about.
Do you have like an estimate for like elementary, middle?
The elementary is really very, very good, and it almost goes by grade level, so in other words, kindergarten would be a lower level, like sixteen or seventeen, first grade eighteen, second and third grade, twenty to twenty-two, fourth grade, twenty-three, fifth and sixth grade, twenty-four, twenty-five, seventh and eighth grade, about the same, even with taking out a team. And then high school, it just depends on the course of study, but they're very good ratios. You're committed to that, and we're committed to that as well.
Yeah, and I just wanted to point it out, just because I, I think that twenty-four, twenty-five ratio for myself is right on the threshold of getting too high personally, obviously not as, as a board, but I just wanted people to understand that, that it's not like we have classrooms with like fifteen kids in it, that should be, you know, could be twenty or twenty-five, so. I just wanted to point that out, so that people understood that if, if you were to not go with the bleachers or something like that and actually take a teacher away, our ratio starts to continue to go up, so, thank you.
And actually, it's page nineteen of our budget book in the front, Merrimack School District projected enrollments, and it gives you the pupil-to-teacher ratios for each elementary school by grade and by building. So, high school, a little, little less granular, obviously, for all the electives and et cetera. So on that note, are there any other questions of tier cuts and budget discussion? Then we will move on to item number five, which is proposed warrant articles. So as expected, we are going to get drafts, overviews of the articles that we've discussed as a board that we wanted to consider for this year. It is not a language that would go on the ballot at this point, it's, hasn't been vetted by legal counsel, and until we're ready to move articles forward, it'd be, you know, premature for us to have it vetted by legal counsel. So on this, at this point, we want to look at the draft warrant articles that we have to consider, which ones make sense. If there are those that don't make sense, then we will definitely want to vet that as well. And again, we would look to do more on Tuesday with that, so. Marge, did you want to go through?
Yeah, we're going to go through these, and I just want to add one more thing to you. You can come back on Tuesday and take another look, but more than likely, what we'll do is, we'll listen to what you say tonight. We'll send to legal counsel whatever you think is in order, and you do not have to vote on these until February fifth.
Excellent.
Because the budget committee is not even expecting them until February sixth, so that gives you a bit more time to think about them. So what I think I'm going to ask is for Matt to be the lead play, and then I'll jump in on some of the discussion.
Sounds good.
Matt, go.
Thanks. Just to keep the, the numbering system, we put Article One, Article Two, Article Three in there, and Article Four. Article Three is a placeholder for a potential support staff contract, and Article Four is a placeholder for a trailer if needed. But the ones you need to, to focus on, you know, this evening are, you know, Article Five, which is to add to our depleted, our soon-to-be-depleted capital reserve fund, seeing that we took two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars out of that to correct the, the BAT issue at the upper elementary school. There's like four thousand setting, sitting in there right now, or would, will be sitting in there right now, once the transfer is finalized. This is just to take from the seventeen eighteen budget surplus at the end of the year, if it remains, up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and to transfer that amount into the school district capital, school district repair capital reserve fund, as it was established years ago, and the school board's obviously agents to expend. So that's Article Five. Article, yeah, go.
Do you want to discuss them one at a time, or do you wish to have them all, all read at once? What, what is your preference?
We'll talk about each one then. So are there any questions on Article Five? Andy?
So, um, last year, a equivalent to Article Five was to put seventy-five thousand in, but that's because we already had over a hundred thousand sitting in there, a hundred and some odd thousand, a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So what this will do is put in, back into this fund, so we enter that budget year of eighteen, nineteen with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This assumes that we will use funds from, that we already approved for you, plus anything we get from the state, plus whatever else we get through other funds that you have at your availability to do the remediation, remediation issue for the BATs. And this is strictly to reseed that for the following years, and not to cover any cost of the BAT thing.
Yeah, we wouldn't be, that's a good point, we wouldn't be looking into putting money into this fund and then having a request come July first to spend the money on the rest of the BAT remediation, because all those bills will be paid. They're already doing the brick right now, so we're looking at end, end of January for the brickwork to be done, so all those bills will be paid. This is to bring the fund back up to where it was a few years ago.
Cinda?
And I, I think that makes sense too, because otherwise we have nothing, we have nothing to go to and to start a new year for any emergency whatsoever. You know, it may not be BATs, but it could be something else, and although it's not as high as I think that we'd like, it's probably a good place to start to try to build that back up again.
Are there any other questions? I had one, and that is, I think, year over year, you've presented to us less and less of a surplus because of things that have come, you know, to the district, so this year, I think it was one point eight million, if that makes sense?
Well, the surplus was three point two, but it was around a million dollars, million four, less than in prior years.
Right.
Because in prior years, we had the benefit of the health insurance trust million-dollar payment.
Gotcha.
So that's gone, so.
Of course.
Yeah, that's.
So could you, I know that we do try to budget for some worst-case scenario, but would there be any hesitation that we would be able to get up to ten percent, would, get the hundred and fifty thousand, keeping the ten percent as a cap?
No, I don't think so at all, I think we would be able to hit the hundred and fifty, fifty thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, just looking at projections, early projections from CAT aid coming in, I can tell that, so.
Obviously, the, the things that we have to wait for the check to actually come in the mail and see how much they give us.
Absolutely.
No problem at all. Michael?
I know that it was already stated, but I just want to state it again for the public that all of our surplus goes back to the taxpayer.
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're on to Article Six.
Article Six is to raise and appropriate two hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars to repave, grind up, uh, put back to its natural state, and then repave the circle in the lower parking lot of Thornton's Ferry Elementary School. The circle going around the front of the building is in, it's in really poor condition, and the parking lot is, needs some attention also, lots of cracks in it. We've talked about this for a few years now, so this would be the, the paving job for the year. Last year, we did the bus loop around the high school, which was very successful in the front of the high school, and it, it's terrific, and we'd like to do the same thing here.
Okay, questions, Michael?
I haven't looked at the website for this yet, but if this warrant article were to move forward, can you do what you've done in the past with the roofing and stuff like that, and give a presentation online of pictures of the need for it and stuff like that? I think you've done a great job with that in the past.
Absolutely.
Okay, are there any other questions on Thornton's Ferry's lot, yes?
Just to reiterate for anybody that didn't hear, this is really past the point of, of sealing and crack filling again, because it's sort of like the way that it was in front of Merrick High School, in terms of broken apart and all that kind of stuff, right? Is that inaccurate?
Yeah, that's, that's accurate, we've crack filled the loop, and if anybody's been on crack fill, I remember one summer I went and I was down there with my motorcycle, and the entire front wheel just kind of moved around six inches because of the rubberized crack fill surface, so, yeah, it's pretty bad.
And thi, this is where, as Michael said, the pictures are going to be.
The pictures show a thousand words, yes.
The high school was more obvious because people voted there and things like that. Thornton's Ferry has a very small group of people that go to it, even Reed's had more because people played soccer there.
Right.
But Thornton's is really sort of an isolated school, so I think the pictures are even more important for that, we draw it forward.
Okay, on to seven.
Item seven, this is for the purchase of One Brentwood Drive, the land and the facility, formerly known as the, the Brentwood School. This is the building that is the, the red building right across the parking lot from the special services blue house and kind of kitty corner to us in the greenhouse, so it's right in our, our campus. It's owned by the Southeastern Regional Educational Service Center, and they are looking to sell this building. It raises and appropriates a sum of two hundred and seventy-five thousand for that purpose, and it's, um, let's see, in the assessing records, parcel ID zero zero five D dash four, bunches zeros and then thirteen, so. It authorizes the district to purchase this for two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Little under an acre, building, I believe, is eight, nine thousand square feet total, I think, or could be a little bit more. But this is what it is.
The thing I would just say historically is, this particular item has been in the capital improvement plan of the school board for fifteen or sixteen years, and we have just been about trying to figure out what might be a viable solution to provide office space, more suitable office space for persons in the superintendent's office and in the student services office. And I think over time, we've tried to listen very much to the public about what the public would want for us. I think people I meet up with definitely would like us to be in a better space, a more efficient space. And so we have looked at possibilities, we've looked at the notion of a freestanding building, a new building. We've looked at additions onto the high school, and clearly, I think what people have said in the community is they would like us to find a space, a building within the community of Merrimack that's already built, a structure that's already there, that perhaps is renovated to meet our needs. So this is really a situation that probably presents itself just once in many, many years. And it is because this particular dwelling, which is diagonally across from our office, is up for sale. As Matt points out, belonging to Southeastern Regional Educational Service Center. And so it has gone up for sale, and our legal counsel has been able to get into a purchase and sales agreement, but it does not become viable until it gets put before the voters for their consideration. So it, it seems to make a lot of sense. I think one of the things that I want to point out is that it's within our domain, which means there are three schools that would be very close by to this particular building, and that's terribly important, just from a point of business, because the, the three schools could access us, and so I think it's got a lot of positive points this year. It's important to point out that we're only asking about the purchase of the land and the building with the idea that a year from now, we would come back and talk in terms of renovation, because it does need to be renovated.
Okay, I see Michael and Andy so far.
So I, I think that I can speak for myself here, that I'm very excited about this opportunity to purchase this property, because I think that it, A, it is centrally located. I, I do feel that it is also an area that we should be looking at purchasing, no matter what, considering it's, is basically part of the high school area, it's, it's right there, so if expansion in the future were to be needed, which we are not discussing any expansion at this point, it would be an area that would obviously be very valuable to the district, no matter what was done with this property. But I think that, obviously, everybody has listened to the community at large in regards to, obviously, what has been presented in the past, and I think this is a very valuable and well-thought-out decision to make this purchase by everybody that's been involved, and I think that it's something that should be very much considered by all the voters. And I think that hopefully most of the voters will see that. will see that, uh, the due diligence has been done with the presentation this year of attaching it to the school with, uh, presenting the building by itself, and then obviously, I think this third option would probably be the best for everybody involved. So I just want to say thank you to everybody that's been involved in this.
Andy, then Cinda.
So I thought for people watching, I'd give a little background of how we got here with this. So Marge talked about the Southeastern Regional Educational, this is what we mostly know as Suresk. Um, those about, that have paid attention to Suresk, Suresk had a big building that they, they bought in Bedford, and they also own the Brentwood School and, and sort of facilitated it for years. Um, Brett, the Suresk has gone through a change in what they did. They have liquidated their, their asset in Bedford. They no longer own that building. They're getting back to their core, um, consulting services rather than a, than a, um, a venue for facilitating events and things like that. And as part of this process, they also, um, and we know that they have not run the, the Brentwood School the way it was traditionally run for several years now, um, and the building was just kept and leased out periodically. So as Marge said, this is sort of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that's been presented, that the bank that owns the resources was willing to, to sell this, um, this land and building. And for us, for the Merrimack School District and the town of Merrimack, it made perfect sense to, to move forward and try to purchase this. Um, the, the warrant articles were two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. There is a, a, um, contingent purchase and sale in place that says, "We have the right to buy this for this amount, but the voters must approve it," which is the reason it's this warrant article for two hundred seventy-five thousand. As Michael alluded to, this is, and Marge stated, this is just to be able to purchase the building. It's an existing building that has value to it. In particular, the land has value to it. It's right there, um, right in the middle of, of, what's the word you used, Marge? Your, uh, your cent, your domain. Thank you, that's it. Um, what it does, as Michael alluded to, is that it really removes the concept of these multimillion-dollar standalone building concepts that we've talked about. One of the things we don't know the answer to yet is what renovations would be required to, to be able to sort of convert this into something more suitable for office space and meeting space. Um, and while we don't have the actual values, I think all of us to a person believe that the cost will be significantly lower than any of the other options we've been looking at recently. So as we go and we, we promote this and we talk about this to the voters, I think it's important that they understand that two hundred seventy-five thousand to obtain it, and then over the coming year, we'll come up and work with the planning and building and our, and the boards and in the public to come up with a, a reasonable and prudent, um, way to be able to, um, update this building, to be able to do what needs to be done, and then be able to release the, the two existing buildings to other purposes or back to parking or whatever we decide to do with that. So, um, having been part of planning and building, part of this for a long time, I think this is really answering the requests of the taxpayers that we not build a new building, that we not go and build some fancy Taj Mahal kind of thing. This is using existing structure that will renovate, but we're not going to necessarily add on some big, huge twenty thousand square foot addition off the side. We're not going to put another brick and mortar off the side of the high school. This is optimal, efficient, to try to get this done, to get our staff into a safe place to be and a, in a place that's more current to carry us through many decades to come. So I reinforce Michael's statement, this is a, a huge opportunity that I, I really want the town and the voters to look at carefully, and also I encourage them to support it because I think, well, we won't have another opportunity at doing this in the future.
Cinda?
Um, yeah, I'm just gonna echo, um, my fellow board members' comments. This is extremely exciting. I mean, not only, the timing is incredible, um, we have a need for it, it's right on our campus. Um, it, it's, um, I think it's, it's just a very exciting opportunity.
You can get one more.
Well, I'd also like, for people that are interested, the, the cost of the building to, the, the purchase and sales we've negotiated is for two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. If one were to go and look at the assessor's database for the town of Merrimack, they assessed this building and property at one million dollars. Now, we know that that's probably not what you could buy it for, but I believe that two hundred seventy-five thousand is significantly less than the intrinsic value of this, even if you made it half of what it was, the appraised value. So this is, this is a very good deal in my mind, given what's out there and where, where it's at and all that stuff, so.
That was going to be my comment, but I'm glad you could have it. It's fine, it's fine. I'm a team player. It's fine. Uh, and, uh, Marge?
And the other thing I think is important to say is that it is currently being utilized. I think that's an important point to, to say too. It's not like it's sitting fowl, meaning that the Southeastern Regional Educational Service Center has it leased to the Nashua School District, and it's being used as an alternative school, so I think that's good as compared to a building just sitting there. It is being utilized and will be up to June thirty. It becomes available as of July first.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments?
If you have another question I would ask, I'll ask it first and then you can.
There you go. I'll let, you, you can ask my questions for me, I'll write them down. Um, no, the only thing I would just reiterate is, you know, with this opportunity comes, um, what I would call great potential. I think, as Marge said when she, uh, presented this article, that there will be renovations that will be required to optimize the space. It, we don't envision it being anywhere near the cost of a new facility, uh, but retrofitting will have to happen for certain things. You know, we are a school district, things that we have to do, so, uh, properly stored documentation, all that good stuff. But, you know, when we go to do those things, um, our goal is to be transparent and communicate, uh, proactively. Um, as we do go through the process, we're not going to just take one person's vision of, of how they can make our, uh, operational, um, requirements work. So I see us going to multiple sources to find that design that will work right for us, and then, of course, when you go into an RFP situation where you talk about the specs of what you need and how they can do it, will also, you know, gives us the opportunity to really look at the range of costs for, for different renovation, um, specs. So I think it gives us a lot of time to truly, once, you know, assuming we get this property, which of course I'm very hopeful that we will, um, that there will be a lot of vetting through meetings, through, through needs assessment of, on what we want to do with those facilities and how we can make it work. And, uh, and with that, there will be things like RFPs, and it will be a very structured focus to do that. So I think, you know, we're in a good place. Um, you know, if this vote goes the way, um, we feel is best for the district, and, and from there, I think the potential is to save the taxpayer money on what we felt, uh, could be done is, is, is definitely there. So, you know, I, I do hope that if there are questions, um, that, you know, we definitely want to hear from the community in a structured and, um, that I would call appropriate manner. Um, definitely, the district loves calls, the district will take emails, we as the board, as elected officials, um, are here to do the same thing. This is a great time to start the dialogue, even before the vote, on, on what questions they may have about the facility and what our goals are. So the time is now to, to keep this dialogue going, and I'm hoping that, uh, just having this on the, uh, agenda tonight will, will start that, so. And we're live tonight, which we, you know, because we got to have our room back, which is very exciting. So on that note, are there any other questions on Article Seven? Seeing none, let's go on to Article Eight.
Article Eight is to raise and appropriate the sum of eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to implement a full-day public kindergarten at the three elementary schools in Merrimack. Eight hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and one dollars is the cost of staffing. Uh, we segregate it out because we need that in the warrant article in order for it to, if it passes, carry on into the default budget for next year. I've been in kind of, uh, conversation with Department of Revenue Administration and our legal counsel also, uh, that this will go, and if, if it's voted in the affirmative, would go in the default budget, so there's not, no concern there. But I didn't want to bring the extra sixty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-nine, which is an addition, which is the original equipping, uh, the furniture, uh, reading materials, texts, et cetera, instructional materials. So total cost is eight hundred and seventy-eight four fifty, full-day kindergarten at the Merrimack, uh, three elementary schools, uh, with a recurring cost in, in year one and, you know, subsequent years of eight hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and one dollars.
Oops, or I could turn this on. Are there questions on Article Eight? I'll go. And that is, I know that we talked about with the adoption of full-day kindergarten, there's additional money from the state that could come. Is this being accounted for in the, uh, the number in the warrant?
No, what we would do is, um, that additional adequacy money that would come, we would show that as a revenue.
Okay.
I have to budget the gross amount.
Okay.
Of the cost, so this is not net of that revenue.
Okay, so basically, this is, you know, we will, we expect to see revenue, plus, you know, the keynote question has come up quite often, and that could also offset, correct?
So I've just received notification from the Department of Ed that, um, one has to either state on January thirty-first that you are going to have full-time kindergarten, or you state it after you get through a vote, if you're putting it up for a vote, like in March or in April. Eighteen hundred is what we currently get for our kindergarten students, and we are assured of getting an additional eleven hundred, so it would be twenty-nine hundred per student. I mean, and we've received notification, if we have full-day kindergarten, that we will receive eleven hundred additional dollars.
Okay, and now the hands are coming. Okay, we'll start with Cinda then Andy.
Is there any way with the, so basically, we would have to put the full cost in the warrant article, correct? Knowing that some of that will come back from the state?
Yes.
Is there any way in the writing of the warrant article, um, that we'd be able to show that to the voters so they know that?
You would, you would do that in the, uh, in the, in the voter's guide, I would say.
Okay.
Um, I don't want to put, it would be confusing. First, first of all, I'd have a revenue in there. It's, it looks like I'm offsetting, but I'm not really offsetting, so it's two, they're two disparate figures that, that are in the same warrant article, so it's, it's a lot cleaner.
So that makes sense.
To just have the full cost and use the voter's guide for the explanation and the web.
Yeah.
That we do and the public forums that we would have also.
And what's the range that we think that we might be eligible for? Like on the low end, the high end of?
Well, there's definitely the fifteen hundred per kid times the.
It's the, you get eighteen hundred, which is, you know, what we currently get, and we're going to get an additional eleven hundred, so it's twenty-nine hundred per kindergarten student.
And what does that?
You turned your mic off. You turned your mic off.
Oh. What does that, um, come out to based on our projected enrollment?
Twenty-nine hundred, two hundred and forty.
Six hundred and ninety-six thousand.
That's twenty-nine hundred?
Twenty-nine hundred.
Times two forty, so the, so that's the entire kindergarten full-time enrollment.
Two hundred and forty.
Yeah.
So two hundred and forty, so of the eight hundred and eight thousand dollars that's, of the eight, eight seventy-eight we get, we would get back from that in incremental two hundred and forty thousand.
About a third of it?
Two hundred and sixty thousand.
About a third of it, approximately, is that right?
Incrementally, yes, because we're already getting some for the half day.
Right, but it, it, the key is, if we already get eighteen hundred.
Yeah, you want the.
It'll be about two hundred and sixty-five thousand.
So the delta's eleven hundred.
So two hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Yes.
We would see in revenue that doesn't show up here, but that would go in the voter's, so that's.
But that would, that's what would offset.
That'd be the offset, so the net, if you're looking at the net cost of the program, two sixty-eight, seventy-eight, you're looking at probably six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand.
Okay.
Of which, of which it would be a little bit less than that ongoing because we'd get that, that aid annually, but you don't have the upfront startup cost, so.
Yeah.
Of the eight hundred thousand, on the ongoing, we would get two hundred and sixty-five, so it actually is five hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Right.
On an annualized basis.
Annualized basis, because you're just paying for staff.
To your point, it'd be good to put that in the voter's guide because that's the, that's the kicker that shows that the state aid is coming in to offset it, and what you're just asking for is what the total amount would be.
Right. I will be sure and contact you directly so we can work out the language for the voter's guide for this article specifically.
Blinking lights, maybe?
Yes. Anything that Mr. Schneider would like, you'll get on this one.
There. And the deliberative session will also give us time to really break out that as well, so.
Oh, yeah.
We have a lot, a lot of opportunities for, for the public to find out what it's all about, uh, and they can always call and email us. Uh, so Michael?
Um, I believe we're gonna have one more meeting with the, uh, task force.
We're gonna have a formal presentation on the sixteenth of January with the elementary school principals, parents, and teachers, speaking to questions that were raised at the last meeting, as well as additional information to assure you, um, that, uh, the task force has addressed all issues around full-day kindergarten.
And just that, I know that one of my points where it's saying that communities around us didn't have kindergarten, I know that, uh, some of the information has been addressed to me, that, uh, a lot of the communities around us that do not currently have it are in the same process that we are in currently to actually, um, implement it, and I think that the taxpayers have to understand that that could actually be a, an issue in valuation of our community in the, in the actual buildings or home sales or whatever, uh, because we would be at a competitive disadvantage if we did not have it, so.
A detractor, absolutely.
Yep.
Are there any other questions on Article Eight? Seeing none, seeing none, we're on to Article Number Nine, which is, back to you.
Okay, Article Number Nine is to, um, you know how, well, we were talking about earlier, how the school districts can't retain surplus, um, like, uh, a town can retain surplus? This would allow us, uh, if, if voted in the affirmative and passed on to the voters by the board, to allow us to retain two and a half percent of our net assessed budget. So you'd look at our operating budget, and then you'd take away all the revenues, including the adequacy amount, and you come up to, let's say this year, around fifty-one million dollars. So it would allow us to retain two and a half percent of that, uh, so roughly a little, little over a, a million dollars that we could, uh, could retain, uh, for surplus that can be used to reduce the tax rate or for emergencies to be approved by the, the Department of Ed. Uh, you would have this money, and it's my understanding in talking with Department of Revenue Administration, you would have this money if you, let's say, we put it on the ballot, it got voted in the affirmative, I'd have to wait until the next year to capture a surplus to retain it, so I couldn't do it right away. And then during that year, probably nineteen-twenty, where we retain the surplus, we would have to either use it to reduce the tax rate or for an emergency, or we have to give it back fully to reduce taxes. So it's a year-to-year thing. If you don't use it in the year that you retain it after that year, then you have to give it all back. You can't accumulate this.
Okay.
Which is a little, a little spin that I heard. I wasn't aware of that, but we dug down a little bit.
Okay, so I saw Naomi's hand up, I saw Andy's hand up, did I miss anyone? Oh, okay, Michael's, okay, so go Naomi, Michael, and Andy, let's work our way up.
Um, this is simplistic and maybe not an accounting way of looking at it, but it sounds like essentially what we do now, but with a year's deferment.
Basically, yes. What we do now for, let's say, you know, we just, we had a warrant article here that you, you just reviewed, to retain X amount of surplus for the emergency purposes, you know, that fund. It's, it's kind of the same thing, but you can use it for, um, tax stabilization if you wanted to. If we had a year where we had a low surplus, we had this in reserve, we could take this and let the floodgates open on it, but it's only a year-to-year basis. You can't retain two and a half percent every single year till you, till you accumulate twenty million dollars or, or nine million dollars like some of our neighbors do. You know, you couldn't, you couldn't do that, so. This is something that I was, uh, really for initially, and a lot of people that could tell you that, but after learning some of the, getting some of the, the answers that I got, and a lot of the answers really weren't giving me a comfort factor that I was getting the proper information right away, I think this is a cake that, just, if you just want my opinion, I think this is a cake that isn't baked right now. I'd like to see a couple of districts do it, there's not many that do, and have it play out and see how it's operationalized before we step forward with it, because I'd hate to ma- make a mistake in misinterpreting the intent of this article. But we put it out there because we did. out there because we did talk about it.
So Michael, Andy, Cinda?
Okay. Well, that just threw me for a curveball. So I, I was going to ask if the 2.5% is the number that the state dictates, or is it, is that flexible? Could we also put in there that not to exceed a certain amount?
That's 2.5%. It's, it's per the RSA. It's right out of the statute.
So.
Up to.
So now I guess I'll give this to the administration is what Matt just said also, what the administration is also thinking in regards to this warrant article at this point?
The reason we put the warrant article before you is because during our deliberations from the summer to this point, I believe it was Vice Chair Schneider that specifically said, "When you come to preparing the budget, it would be good if we had a discussion about the retention of surplus." So that was held, and so we're bringing it forward. But this is not something the administration is, is putting out there, let's say, or something that we would, we would say right now. I want to say, Matt has it, has concern, I think, from an operational viewpoint. My concern always is about what warrants do you have before the voters and how do they interplay with one another? The fund that we need to replenish is the capital reserve fund, and we're asking to take from the surplus at the end of the year to replenish that fund. We desperately need that because we've been having unanticipated happenstances over a period of time. And my concern is if you put that up, that capital reserve fund, up against the retention of surplus, 2.5%, there could be confusion. So as a taxpayer, I'll give you neither. And that, that concerns me, just about interpretation. So I give you my personal opinion.
I appreciate that. For me, and this is obviously kind of first blush at this, it, to me, it's kind of seems like, it's kind of like a capital reserve, but an end around in a way, you know, where you could base, like you said, you could either use it to offset taxes or do other things to flatten the tax rate. If you think long-term, and we actually were to look at cap, capital reserve funds, I'm more of a proponent of capital reserves funds than actually trying to retain a, a percentage of our, our stuff to possibly, not saying that the school district or the administration would do it that way, but that's, to me, it kind of sounds like it's fairly same as if we had emergency fund versus this. And obviously, we could always vote to give back emergency funds if we wanted to or capital reserve. But I'm at first blush. I'm, I'm feeling that I think I agree with Matt on this, that it could probably pass.
See, if, if I could just go on a little bit. I know if, if I worked for the town, I know how this would work for me. You know, I'd have a surplus at the end of the year. I'd present to the board what that surplus is. You would let me know how much to retain and how much to give back to the taxpayers. It's pretty simple. This warrant article, when I asked those same kind of questions, I could not get the straight answer at the same time. And then I got an answer of, well, you have to give it back if you don't use it within one year, which is not what the town does. The town can retain it. They can retain 5% to 7% to 10% of their surplus. It's a recommended surplus of their assessed valuation. It's a, it's a recommended range. And the reason why is when you have tax bills that go out, you don't always collect them at 100%. Sometimes, in some years, back in the day, when I was on the other side and the economy was really bad, you, you book a warrant, you collect 70, 70% of it, and you don't have any cash. So when you have that surplus, it's cash in the bank, basically, that you can meet your obligations. So there's a lot of good reasons why towns can do it. But schools wouldn't operate under the same rules. And I don't think people are clear on what the rules are in this law that was written and how it would be played out. So until that is finalized, to my, my satisfaction, I would advise that you wouldn't touch this for the time being.
Andy and Cinda?
So you're mostly right that I wanted us to revisit this, although I've not been a fan. And I guess maybe what I was really looking for was, you called it half-baked. And when we talked about it last year, it was being put in the oven, right? Sort of being...
Well, things, things do change.
I know, I know.
And when the law was, you know, put there, it was like, you know, here's the information, everything like that. And then you start asking more question. It's like, oh, I'm not sure. I'm going to bring this up to roundtable at the Department of Revenue. So...
So do we, do we know of any school districts that are doing this?
I don't know of any.
Because I asked that question last year.
I don't know of any.
And the answer was no.
Who adopted it, no. Yeah, I could ask the state.
Right. I mean, but I think for me personally, and I agree with, with, with Marge, that you're asking for money to put the, I mean, you talk about emergency in this, you know, that where it says can be, to reduce the tax rate or for emergencies, which is exactly what we're going to use, the $150,000 in the capital reserve fund. So my first comment is we do one or the other. But I think for us, given what you've said, the first one to put it back in the capital reserve fund is the more efficient way to do it because we have control over it. And because this is so unbaked, I don't want to be the fir-, I, I wouldn't, as a one board member, I wouldn't want our district to be the first to go and test the waters on this because you stand to lose money if you don't do it right. And we can't afford, we don't want to lose anything as we go through this. So.
Right.
So I, like Michael, I sort of support your position that it's here, but it would be nice if it was written in an invisible link and disappeared off the...
Yeah, just, just until a few, a few school districts, if they go ahead and they, they go for it. Like I said, if it was, if it was the same rules as the town, I am very comfortable with that, and I know how that works. It's very simple. This has a lot of twists and turns and a lot of hidden things that we don't know yet. It's kind of like when they first developed the default budget. People kind of thought they knew what it meant, but it took a few years before it was fleshed out where people really understood the meaning of one-time appropriations, not likely to reoccur in a following year. You know, it took a lot of test cases, you know. So this is kind of like that right now.
Cinda?
Yeah. My opinion is that this is not the year to be experimenting with the warrant article. There's too much at stake, I think, on the warrant articles, and there's a lot of them. So I think we have to be really prudent about which ones we bring to the voters. And so if, if none of us are really thrilled on this one, I know we're not voting on them tonight. I can't see where, I mean, I would support it.
Now, I would just have to say about consensus, I definitely don't think that we're going to look at it. But I did have a question. You said it could be used to reduce the tax rate or could be used to expend with the approval of the Department of Education.
Right.
And that's the one. So it's not, we would not be the agents to expend, so I want to make that very clear. We would have to go through the Department of Ed and they could tell us whether or not we could spend the money that we're retaining. But to that end, the question I have is, what would they approve? Like what type of thing? I'm not, I mean, is there a, a thought of what that might be?
Well, I've, yeah, something like the BAT mitigation. If you, let, let's say we didn't, we, we had to overexpend our, our budget.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because of the BAT mitigation. So we had cash in the bank, but we, we had to overexpend our appropriation. The first step would be, you know, the board would have to vote to and authorize the superintendent to write a letter to the commissioner. The commissioner would have to approve that expenditure. And then you'd have to have a warrant article on your ballot in order to address the over expenditure, the deficit appropriation.
So again, so the Department of Education would say we could
Could.
With another vote.
Yes.
And then, so you have to wait a year to actually get the money, once they say that you, it meets the criteria to spend the money.
Correct.
Okay. So if there were any questions on that, that was my question.
Yep.
Michael?
Thank you for that little clarification, Shannon. I appreciate it. I, I could see this being valuable to, let's say, an academy that has fluctuating students because of tuition and stuff like that, just as an example. But that might be one of the outliers that I think, just based off of the recent history of Pembroke Academy. So where it's flexible, that's, that's where I see it being a little bit more valuable. But I don't think it fits into what we're doing here at this point. Thanks.
Okay. So any other questions, comments, or interest in Article 9 whatsoever? I'm saying no. Go ahead.
I appreciate the chair asking because although you're not going to take any votes tonight, that's not the intent. It is, what do you wish to be put to legal counsel? And based on everything that I've heard, I would say you're interested in, in everything being looked at from a legal point of view, other than Article 9. Would that be true?
I think by vote of, by consensus, that, that would be the case.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Okay. And then Article 10 will be the placeholder for the operating budget. I'll take that one. Excellent. So based on that, if there are any questions, again, on the warrant articles presented, any questions or concerns, if you can email the superintendent and I prior to the next meeting, so if there's any research to be done or questions of legal counsel, that there's time for that to be posed to them, that would be ideal. Cinda?
I was just going to say that I haven't personally seen the parking lot at Thornton, so I'll be driving through there to get a personal close look at it. I know you'll be putting pictures up on the website as well, but I want to see it firsthand.
You might be seeing pavement this week, right?
Yeah, probably. Yeah. It's much more entertaining in the spring.
Yeah.
Got to work with what you got to work with.
Definitely. Okay. So seeing that, we will close, propose warrant articles and go on to item number six, which now is relevant, which, oh, sorry.
I just asked one more question.
Of course you can.
It's not, it's not a warrant article, but it kind of comes off warrant articles, or it comes out of this section that I wrote to you in the, in the budget. And that was one more item. And it was $155,000 bleachers that were in the Smith Gym. And I put in the text, perhaps, I didn't, we didn't put this in the operating budget, but perhaps you would like to look at as a warrant article. When we were going through the preparation, we just felt that that was just one warrant too many. And so what I would like to ask is for your permission to take that item, so it doesn't get lost, put it back on the capital improvement plan for the year 2019-20. But I can't be doing that without your approval. So if, if you could take action either tonight, if you feel comfortable, or on Tuesday night, the 16th, that would be very helpful.
Okay. I'm sorry about that. We can do it tonight. So I, I will entertain a motion to, Andy, move it.
We're not going to waste any time. I move that we take the capital, the CIP item in the amount of $155,000 for bleachers for the Smith Gym and authorize the superintendent to move it to the, to the CIP, to the 2019-20 budget here.
There you go. Is there a second? Seconded by Cinda. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. We had a vote tonight. Thank you. Good to go. Now, we're on to item number six, which is public participation, participation on agenda items. So if anyone from the public, which we actually have one member now, would like to speak, they can. No pressure, but you're welcome. I'm seeing none. So we will, we will close public participation. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn made by Cinda, seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The motion carries 500. Thank you. We are adjourned. Good night.